Good afternoon. The June 8th, 2021 virtual meeting of the Anorondo County Council is now in session. Today, we will continue with final deliberations on the FY22 proposed budget for Anorondo County. We will start with council amendments to the budget, after which we will take a recess and then come back together to receive supplemental budget requests from the administration. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian. Ms. Radvian? Uh oh, we lost you. Ms. Hare, I do note. Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have all seven council members and our county auditor in attendance.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Radvian.
All right. Sorry for the technical glitch there. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Let's just take a moment to think about the blessings in our own lives, in our families, in our communities, and our world, and think about the way that we can contribute to the blessings of those around us. And now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and is necessary in light of the health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web, broadcasting, excuse me, allowing written comments from the public to be submitted and considered by the council ahead of time, and allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, this technology satisfies the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to meetings, and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Just a second.
Councilman Pruski, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 3231.
Bill number 3221, An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anorondo County.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I figure I do this, I'm gonna do it during amendments. My spouse works for the school system, so I will recuse myself from any amendment involving Unit 2 mid-level administration for the record. I just want to put that out now, but again, I'll identify that when the amendment comes up per ethics protocol, but I want to make sure I just lay that out ahead of time. Any Board of Education, Unit 2 mid-level administration, I will not be voting on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Radvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. Similarly to my colleague in District 4, I am a Unit 1 employee part-time for Anorondo County Public Schools, and I will be recusing myself for any amendments that directly impact Unit 1, Unit 1 issues.
Madam Chair.
Madam Secretary.
If it's possible, if we can have any clarification on the amendments by referring to them by amendment number, so that I can mark the recusal for those particular amendments. Is that something just to keep in mind as we move forward here?
Yes, I think both Ms. Radvian and Mr. Pruski intend to identify the amendments at the time as well. Okay. Are we going to have Mr. Trembauer joining us, or anyone from the admin at this point? Hello, Mr. Trembauer.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the council. I am here and prepared to offer comments as, as needed.
Excellent. I didn't think we could proceed without invoking your name, so. Okay. This is going to be a somewhat awkward process. I know that some of you have the amendments all printed out. Some of us are doing them entirely electronically, and we may need a moment to be able to shift screens and do what we have to do. So if I'm going too fast, you know, you can all let me know, and if I'm going too slow, I'll try to speed up. But anybody who feels like we need more time, you know, just shout my name, so I will slow down. Okay? Now, we do have these amendments arranged, grouped into some categories that might be helpful for blocks. I do not know whether anyone would like to make a motion to group any amendments as a block, but if so, now is the appropriate time. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. At this point, I'd make a motion to block vote amendments 1 through 60, to take all of them as a block.
Second. Allison Pickard.
Okay. I'm taking a moment to figure out where 60 is, okay? I'm looking at 1 through 9, so I need a second in the folders to find where 60 is, but.
Madam Chair, they should be in the, the capital agreed upon folder. And Ms. Schultz will bring them all up on screen as well as we go through, so everybody will have that visual as I read in the descriptions.
Thank you, Ms. Corby. Okay. Then, we have a motion that has been made and seconded to vote on amendment numbers 1 through 60 inclusive as a block. Does anyone object to any amendments being included within that block? Okay, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to vote on amendment numbers 1 through 60 as a block.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
And Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
That's seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on amendment numbers 1 through 60 as a block has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, in one deep breath, please read amendment numbers 1 through 60.
Okay. Amendment number 1, reduces contractual services by $622,000 for gas, natural, and propane, $20,000, based on expenditure history plus inflation. County facility repair and renovation, $200,000, based on expenditure history and lack of justification for increased need. Other professional services, $22,000, based on reduced need for security guard services at Commerce Park, and space and real estate rentals, $380,000, based on revised move-in date for Commerce Park. Amendment number 2, reduces debt service by $145,000 for consultants to eliminate duplicate funds or expenses related to costs and fees for annual bond sale activity. Amendment number 3, reduces contractual services by $45,000 for other services based on expenditure history plus inflation. Amendment number 4, reduces personal services by $32,000 for special pays, FICA, to correct an overage error in the calculation. Amendment number 5, reduces personal services by 167, I'm sorry, $167,700 for turnover based on historic turnover percentage and number of department vacancies, and reduces contractual services by $25,000 for management services based on spending needs. Amendment number 6, reduces personal services by $68,000 for salaries and wages to correct an overage error in the calculation. Amendment number 7, reduces personal services by $152,000 for insurance, $120,000, based on duplicate insurance costs and contractual FICA, $32,000, for incorrect calculation of contractual FICA. Reduces supplies and materials by $55,000 for other supplies and materials based on expenditure history plus inflation, and provides for the new additional childcare sites. Amendment number 8, reduces personal services by $181,000 for pension to correctly budget it to the amount set by the actuary. Amendment number 9, reduces contractual services by $230,000 for consultants to eliminate duplicate funds for expenses related to costs and fees for annual bond sale activity. Amendment number 10, capital budget increases FY22 IAC by $2,593,000. Amendment number 11, capital program reduces FY23 IAC by $2,593,000, and increases FY23 bonds by $2,593,000. Amendment number 12, capital budget increases FY22 IAC by $2,276,938. Amendment number 13, capital budget reduces FY22 Pago by $180,000. Amendment number 14, capital budget reduces FY22 other state grants by $34,000 and increases FY22 bonds by $34,000. Amendment number 15, capital budget increases FY22 other state grants by $100,000. Amendment number 16, capital budget reduces FY22 general fund Pago by $1,300,000. Amendment number 17, capital budget increases FY22 IAC funding by $2,288,000 and reduces FY22 Pago by $2,288,000. Amendment number 18, capital program reduces FY23 IAC funding by $2,288,000 and increases the FY23 bonds by $2,288,000. Amendment number 19, capital program reduces bonds by $834,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Amendment number 20, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $49,000. Amendment number 21, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by an additional $500,000. Amendment number 22, prior council approval reduces prior approved other sources by $101,000 and impact fees by $53,000. Amendment number 23, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $600,000. Amendment number 24, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $1 million. Amendment number 25, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $200,000. Amendment number 26, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $870,000. Amendment number 27, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by an additional $1 million. Amendment number 28, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by an additional $2 million. Amendment number 29, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by an additional $1 million. Amendment number 30, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by an additional $5 million. Halfway there. Amendment number 31, capital program reduces bonds by $886,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Amendment number 32, capital program reduces general county bonds by $379,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Amendment number 33, capital program reduces PPI bonds by $665,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Amendment number 34, capital program reduces PPI bonds by $690,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Amendment number 35, capital program reduces PPI bonds by $182,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Amendment number 36, capital program reduces bonds by $258,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Amendment number 37, capital budget deletes 738,000 of FY22 PPI bonds. Amendment number 38, capital program deletes $369,000 of PPI bonds in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, deletes $853,000 of PPI bonds in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and deletes $4,937,000 of PPI bonds in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. All reductions except for $1,353,000 in FY25 are expected to be replaced with impact fees. Amendment number 39, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $184,000. Amendment number 40, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by an additional $166,000. Amendment number 41, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $45,000. Amendment number 42, prior council approval reduces prior approved POS acquisition by $105,000 and other federal grants by $5,000. Amendment number 43, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $275,000. Amendment number 44, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $100,000. Amendment number 45, capital budget deletes $200,000 of FY22 Pago. Amendment number 46, capital program reduces Pago by $50,000 each year for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2023, June 30th, 2024, June 30th, 2025, June 30th, 2026, and June 30th, 2027. Amendment number 47, capital budget reduces FY22 bonds by $850,000. Amendment, excuse me, amendment number 48, capital budget deletes $80,000 of FY22 Pago. Amendment number 49, capital budget deletes $1 million of FY22 Pago. Amendment number 50, capital program increases FY23 Pago by $1 million. Amendment number 51, capital budget reduces FY22 bonds by $100,000. Amendment number 52, capital program reduces bonds by $100,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, reduces bonds by $100,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, reduces bonds by $100,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, reduces bonds by $100,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, and reduces bonds by $100,000 in fiscal year ending June 30th, 2027. Amendment number 53, capital budget reduces FY22 bonds by $49,000. Amendment number 54, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $50,000. Amendment number 55, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by $170,000. Amendment number 56, prior council approval reduces prior approved WPRF bonds by $230,000. Amendment number 57, capital budget reduces prior approved solid waste bonds by an additional $1 million. Amendment number 58, prior council approval reduces prior approved water bonds by $900,000. Amendment number 59, prior council approval reduces prior approved water bonds by $300,000. Amendment number 60, capital budget deletes $500,000 of FY22 wastewater Pago.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would any of these sponsors of these, any of the 60 amendments, like to make a brief statement on those amendments before we move to adopt? May I have a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
In a second.
Pruski, second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on amendments 1 through 60?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trembauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trembauer, Budget Officer. I just wanted to say for the record, these are the agreed-upon auditor recommendations. We support all 60 of these. And by our calculation, this represents on the operating side, $1,104,700 of cuts, $904,700 of which is recurring funding. So, thank you for packaging these together, and the administration supports.
Thank you, Mr. Trembauer. Anyone else? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendments 1 through 60.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment numbers 1 through 60 are adopted.
Thank you. At this time, is there a motion to block any other of the next amendments? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. I would make a motion at this time to block vote amendment 61, 62, 64, 66, 67, 74, 75, 76, 77, and 78. Those just, well, I'll wait and see if there's a second before I explain.
Would you like to repeat those numbers, just to make sure we've gotten all?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Amendment number 61, 62, 64, 66, 67, 74, 75, 76, 77, and 78.
You may explain briefly why you'd like to group those amendments.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So, the purpose of blocking these amendments, these are auditor recommended cuts that the administration disagreed with to both the operating and capital budget that have been agreed upon, well, I should say, all but one of them were co-sponsored by myself, Ms. Fiedler, and Ms. Hare. The only one that was not co-sponsored by all three of us is amendment 67, which was only sponsored by Ms. Hare and Ms. Fiedler.
All right. Is there a second on the motion to block?
Give her a second.
Does anyone object to having any of those amendments included in this block? Okay. Then, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to vote on amendment numbers 61, 62, 64, 66, 67, 74, 75, 76, 77, and 78 as a block.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. The motion to vote on amendment number 61, 62, 64, 66, 67, 74, 75, 76, 77, and 78 in a block has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the blocked amendments.
Amendment number 61, reduces contractual services by $100,000 for streetlights to account for historical decline in monthly energy usage and maintenance costs associated with LED streetlight fixtures. Amendment number 62, reduces contractual services by $95,000 for other services based on expenditure history plus inflation. Amendment number 64, reduces grants, contributions, and other by $300,000 for unanticipated needs to subject this fund to the same oversight the council practices with using contingencies in the general fund. Amendment number 66, reduces grants, contributions, and other by $515,000 for unanticipated needs to subject this fund to the same oversight the council practices with using contingencies in the general fund. Amendment number 67, capital budget reduces FY22 bonds by $450,000. Give me just a moment. Amendment number 74, capital budget deletes $1 million of FY22 wastewater bonds. Amendment number 75, capital budget deletes $250,000 of FY22 wastewater bonds. Amendment number 76, capital budget reduces FY22 water bonds by $1,600,000. Amendment number 77, capital budget deletes FY22 bonds by $977,000. Amendment number 78, capital program increases FY23 bonds by $977,000.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any of the sponsors, would you like to make a brief statement in support of these amendments? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District 7. I actually have a quick question based on voting on these in a block, given that there were two nay votes. I was under the understanding that the memorandum that we received from Legislative Council earlier in May noted that blocking amendments such as this was something of a unanimous consent circumstance, and that if there were any objections to it, we had to vote on the amendments individually. I just wanted to clarify whether I misunderstood that.
Madam Secretary, I don't believe that's been our historical procedure on doing amendments, specifically on amendment days, because the ADAO is not actually the legislation, and the rules are different for legislation.
We do separate budget and legislation out, yes, and this is also not a legislative day, which would kind of go towards that. Ms. Schewitt has been asked to join here. I don't want to speak on her behalf, however, I do believe that the underlying factor here was fairness, and the historical method that we have followed for a couple decades now is, you know, it does recognize fairness in the way that we, it was handled. However, Ms. Schewitt is here. I will allow her to weigh in since it was her opinion.
I was listening. I didn't hear anyone ask that any one of the amendments be removed from the block. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Right, but that's the only, there was a unanimous consent to having them together as a block. How you voted on it wasn't addressed in the memorandum.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Sure.
All right. And would any of the sponsors like to speak to any of the current amendments under consideration before we move to adopt? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
In a second?
Fiedler, second.
Thank you both. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Pruski.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. No, for we're going to hear from the administration. Um, I, I appreciate, first of all, the auditor. Um, I had a conversation with her about the amendments that were put forward here. Um, I did also talk to the administration. Some of these are policy decisions. I think that when we look at the budget, there's two things. There's cuts that are really fiscal, financial, and then there are cuts that are policy decisions. And one of the things that I definitely, uh, you know, noticed particularly with some of these amendments, that they are policy decisions, and I will not be supporting the bundle, uh, but I do respect and have everybody has a right, obviously, um, to have a different view on the policy and philosophy, but I just wanted to get that for the record. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D two. Uh, I also have spoken, uh, with the administration and Madam Auditor, and I was wondering if the administration wanted to speak to any of these, because I, I'm under the impression that there was some communication prior since, since, uh, the auditor's cuts, recommendate, recommendate, recommended cuts and today. So, I, are there any of these, Mr. Trumpauer, that, or, uh, Madam Auditor, that were reconciled through communication or, or no?
Mr. Trumpauer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I would, I would say that the, the numbers listed, the administration would ask the council to reject these amendments. Um, we, we feel like we worked very well with the auditor's office and we did accept, um, most of those recommended cuts and all of the ones that you just adopted as a block in the previous action. So, the ones that are in this current block, uh, we have supporting information, we believe, to indicate why we don't think that these are, uh, what we would typically describe as a good cut. Um, I'm, I'm able to go through those as, um, as needed, but generally, it would be consistent with our original rebuttal, uh, from last week. Uh, but I think what you're referring to, um, Councilmember Pickard, is, you know, we, we did kind of work out, uh, some of these. For instance, on amendment sixty-two, which is, uh, a suggested cut on the parks programmatic side, we, we agreed to the partial cut, which I think was included in your previous block, but this goes beyond what we agreed to, to the, the auditor's original recommendation. And I, I think with this cut and with others, uh, we provided information during our rebuttal that sugg- suggests why, um, we think that there would be consequences, uh, specifically to programs, uh, from most of these other cuts. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that unless council wants any particular testimony on a particular amendment within this block.
Madam Auditor?
Michelle Belair, County Auditor. Um, I think that for the ones that have still been brought forward, the information that the new information was so consistent with the old information, but there comes a time where you're making estimates based on either historical information or projections, and those are where some of the differences are. And the two that I would like to kind of bring out specifically, just to make sure we're on the same page in regards to the policy decision kind of before you, um, is for the unanticipated needs. Um, while I think that's the administration's policy that that's being used as kind of a contingency for those funds, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council to make sure that's consistent with what your understanding is. So, now that policy decision comes to you guys, this is the way that I would view that. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question or a comment?
Ma- Madam Chair.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, ju- totally appreciate the auditor's comments, and I, I just want to take a second, um, to respond to the, um, utility cuts for the, um, what we're calling contingency, but what, what we refer to as unanticipated needs. Um, we did take the opportunity to, again, um, touch base with Chris Phipps, DPW Director, and he does strongly oppose this move. Um, uh, the co- the couple of things that he reported to us is that these are highly volatile programs that are subject to emergencies. For instance, you know, wh- when there's a sewer leak, we want to fix it right away. Um, and the budgets are allowances and having a zero-point-five percent contingency, um, to respond to this overall fund, we think is appropriate. Um, there aren't any build-in allowance, built-in allowances in the line items themselves, uh, to allow for unanticipated needs. So, that's why we house them in this particular, uh, budget object. Um, it provides actually more transparency and accountability than being baked into those original line items. And anything that's not spent in this category would fall back to fund balance within this special fund. So, it's important to reinforce that this is all within the special fund, so it can't be taken out and spent on something else across county government. So, the, the only danger of these funds not getting spent is that they stay within the fund as fund balance. Uh, so, I just wanted to convey that because, um, the DPW Director, Phipps, I think, wanted to make sure you knew how strongly he felt about this. So, but, but, but thank you, and I appreciate the auditor's comments.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, if you're ready, please call the roll on the block of amendment numbers sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-seven, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Uh, amendment number sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-seven, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight have been defeated.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, I would like to with, um, consent with, with my colleague, Ms. Hare, to withdraw amendment sixty-three and sixty-five.
Agreed.
So noted.
And I'd also like to motion to bundle and block vote amendment sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three.
Um, Ms. Fiedler, I think if we restate that as amendments sixty-eight through seventy-three inclusive, then that would be a proper motion. Is there a second?
Hare, second.
Madam Monitor, I mean, excuse me, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on a vote to, uh, on the motion to vote as a block on amendments sixty-eight through seventy-three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on amendment numbers sixty-eight through seventy-three has been adopted.
Thank you. Would the sponsors like to make a brief statement on their amendments? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think we can probably just, uh, repeat the prior conversation. These are, um, auditor recommended cuts that the administration disagreed with, but upon review, um, you know, we think the auditor's presentation, um, merits the, the affirmative vote.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Fiedler, so moved.
In a second?
Hare, second.
Mr. Trumpauer, would you like to respond or comment?
Uh, um, yeah, Madam Chair, happy to. Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, did we already read them in? I'm sorry, I was, I was talking to my staff.
Oh, sorry. I skipped that part.
All right. I'll, I'll defer until that point.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number sixty-eight through seventy-three.
Amendment number sixty-eight, prior council approval reduces prior approved general county bonds by one-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. Amendment number sixty-nine, prior council approval reduces prior approved bonds by a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Amendment number seventy, capital budget reduces FY twenty-two bonds by forty-two thousand dollars. Amendment number seventy-one, capital budget reduces FY twenty-two bonds by forty-six thousand dollars. Amendment number seventy-two, capital budget deletes one million dollars of WPRF bonds. Amendment number seventy-three, prior council approval reduces prior approved WPRF bonds by one million, two-hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And of course, we already moved and seconded these amendments. So, Mr. Trumpauer, your comments, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, again, we, I think we were, we were very collaborative with the auditor's recommended capital cuts, and we accepted, uh, the vast majority of them. And these in particular, in this block, I would characterize as, they all either have consequences, meaning if these cuts were taken, there are parts of that project that we could not do, or, um, the, the recommended cuts would take away funding that we anticipate will be needed in the future, um, because the project is not far enough along, uh, to justify taking a cut at this time. And I'll, I'll remind the council, that in particular, at, at this time, um, material costs and other things are quite volatile. Uh, we hope that that market settles down, of course, but, um, I would ask the council to reject these cuts, um, to ensure that the projects listed in this block, uh, can continue on track. And again, if you have specific questions about any of these, I'm happy to respond to those, but I'll leave that as a broad characterization.
Any other comments? Um, Madam Auditor, of course, it's too early to start. I'm losing my mind here. There's a lot going on. Okay, go ahead.
It's, 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 Michelle Belair, County Auditor. Um, this is similar in that there wasn't new information provided that changed our original analysis. The one piece that I did want to bring attention to is for the WPRF. That one-point-two-million of prior approved bonds is similar to the many, um, WPRF cuts that were taken last year related to TBD projects and the general philosophy that the money programmed in the capital projects should be programmed to specific projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number sixty-eight through seventy-three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment numbers sixty-eight through seventy-three have been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number seventy-nine.
Um, amendment number seventy-nine should be coming up on the screen. Amendment number seventy-nine reduces personal services by sixty-three thousand dollars for salaries and wages based on eliminating one management assistant one position.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. This would remove one of the new positions for Department of Aging that was put into the budget by the administration when it was presented to the council.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey so moved.
In a second?
Fiedler, second.
All right. Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, I would very much urge the council to reject this. Um, this, this is a new position, but it is fully reimbursable from the Medicaid fee for service grant. So, if you cut this, it will actually cut revenues, um, for that fund. So, we don't believe that this cut is, is necessary, and we don't believe it would have any positive impact on the county fiscal situation.
Madam Monitor?
Um, Michelle Belair, County Auditor. This is, we just used the totals from the new position to come up with the amount, but can't really speak to the validity of the new positions, or don't historically within our department.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other comments? Questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number seventy-nine.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodgian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment number seventy-nine has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number eighty.
Amendment number eighty reduces grants, contributions, and other by five-hundred thousand dollars for grants and contributions based on removing funding for the resilience authority.
I have that Mr. Volkey is the lead sponsor in this amendment. Would you like to describe it, please?
Yeah, I've, I've not seen that before. Nathan Volkey, District Three. But, um, yeah, the, the idea with this is to remove the five-hundred thousand dollars in seed money funding for the resilience authority, which was passed last night.
Well, the spreadsheet says you're the lead, so I'm sorry, but, uh, certainly, Ms. Hare, Ms. Fiedler, if you'd like to speak to the amendment, you're welcome to. And if not, we'll ask for a motion to adopt.
So moved, Volkey.
In a second?
Hare, second.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpauer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, interestingly, I think we would, we would ask you to reject this, but basically based on the lead sponsor's testimony that, again, the council passed the bill last night. So, the resilience authority has been enabled, and we, we have requested this seed money or startup money in FY twenty-two budget to ensure that that is successful. Um, so, since the council passed the bill, we expect that you would also, um, support the funding, uh, to enable that to happen. So, we'd ask you to please reject this amendment.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eighty.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number eighty has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number eighty-one.
Amendment number eighty-one reduces grants, contributions, and other by five-hundred thousand dollars for grants and contributions based on removing funding for the resilience authority and reduces grants, contributions, and other by three-million-five-hundred thousand dollars to decrease the contingency account.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This is a stack amendment, um, that incorporates previous amendment. The only change is it adds the, um, decrease in the contingency fund.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
In a second?
Fiedler, second.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, a- again, it's, it's a little odd that this is a stacked amendment because the, the previous one failed, so this would do what that did and then take another, I think, three and a half off. And, um, the, the budget office specifically rebuilt the contingency fund back up to twelve million this year. Um, that is where we believe is appropriate amount. Uh, as council knows, last year, um, we were able to live with less than that because that's how we ended up funding the body programs. But it did make thing, the body worn camera programs, rather, it did make things a little dicey. And so, for the size of the operating budget and all the programs that are ongoing, uh, we believe the, the current proposed amount of the CA contingency fund is appropriate, and we'd ask council to reject this amendment.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. This is maybe a moot point, given that it, it was stacked, and I realize the previous amendment just failed. But perhaps Madam Auditor can clarify. I seem to remember from her presentation that actually, the average amount of contingency dollars spent in the last handful of years would definitely warrant this type of a cut from the contingency account. That twelve million dollars is, is an anomaly, really, in, in any given year.
Uh, Michelle Belair, County Auditor. Um, hang on just a second, I'm gonna pull that up. So, the amount of contingency used over the years has varied, but I think that most years, it's closer to twelve million. So the amount of contingency used over the years has varied, but I think that most years it's closer to twelve million. And it's been as high as twelve point three million and as low as eight point nine million, dating back to FY seventeen.
Jessica Hare, District Seven, but the amount that's actually been used of that twelve million has been substantially lower than that in many years, right?
Michelle Boulair County Auditor, yes, correct. It's been as low as five point six million, with last year being, or FY twenty being the highest using the full amount of twelve mil- twelve million.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Trumpauer?
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. I, I just will reiterate two points. First, we were able to use, or we had to use, you know, millions of dollars in unanticipated fund balance in addition to the CA contingency fund. So that's, that's one point to consider. The als, the other one is, I would say the past several years, we have been generally low snow years, but not too far in the distant past. We've had years where there's been as much of, as ten million dollars in snow removal alone. So while it is possible that we have light years and that, that we wouldn't need all of that, we feel it's better to be prepared, and so we again would feel that twelve million dollars is appropriate.
Anyone else have comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eighty-one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number eighty-one has been defeated.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll withdraw amendment eighty-two in light of the vote on eighty-one.
Thank you, sir. Just want to be sure, from what I'm reading, are the next two or three amendments stacked or linked also? I'm not, can't quite tell. Okay, well, we'll just go through them individually. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eighty-three.
Amendment number eighty-three, reduces personal services by ninety-six thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating one assistant claims manager position. Reduces supplies and materials by one thousand dollars for general office supplies, based on the position's ancillary costs. Ancillary costs, excuse me.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I think you're going to hear a general theme on the next several amendments, considering the structural deficit and going above constant yield for additional eight million dollars in revenue. There were a lot of proposed amendments here that are trying to cut where we can, obviously, not easy to do, but have to make hard decisions sometimes with taxpayers' dollars.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
A second?
Fiedler, second.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Administration would ask you to reject this amendment. This is a new position, but, but we believe that this position will actually be very good for the county and for the, the fiscal situation. It's part of a unit that was able to recover over six million dollars in reserves due to a special project, and we believe that adding this position will, will help that unit. We're, we're estimating it's reasonable to consider that the lack of comprehensive oversight by this new position would result in one million dollars of reserves being left on the, on the files, so to, to say. So if the council is interested in cutting positions, this probably isn't the best place to look.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eighty-three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number eighty-three has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eighty-four.
Amendment number eighty-four. Reduces personal services by two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating, eliminating one buyer one and three buyer three positions, and reduces supplies and materials by ten thousand dollars for these four positions' ancillary costs. Reduces contractual services by six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for gas, natural, and propane, twenty thousand dollars, based on expenditure history plus inflation. County facility repair and renovation, two hundred thousand dollars, based on expenditure history and lack of justification for increased need. Other professional services, twenty-two thousand dollars, based on reduced need for security guard services at Commerce Park and space and real estate rentals, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, based on revised move-in date for Commerce Park.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Same, same comments as before, considering the size of the budget, the deficit. Need to find some ways to save somewhere, and I will defer to my colleague, who's also a co-sponsor of this amendment, if she wants to make any comments.
I'll just add that this is the removal of the positions plus the auditor's recommended cuts.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
A second?
Fiedler, second.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. I have to admit, when we saw this one, we were a little surprised, given the amount of interest or concern we've heard about how long it takes things to happen around here and, and go through purchasing. Th- these new positions, these buyer positions, are essential services, strategy to, to help increase the capacity for the procurement division to move things through. So we certainly support these new positions. We think that they will help expedite the county purchasing and procurement. And so if, if you're like us and you want things to move faster, I would encourage you to reject this amendment.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Trumpauer, given the estimates that you were able to perform on the position that I'd wanted to cut in aging, and the other estimate that you were able to perform on the last position about the self-insurance fund, do you have any estimates on how much this is going to actually improve procurement? How much faster things are going to be able to be purchased? Because I was, I was surprised to see that you all were able to make those estimates, considering normally we can't get them.
Well, I think that we got those estimates from the departmental reviews, where we agreed to put those new positions in the department. So thi- this is a little bit different, because the purchasing division doesn't typically bring in revenue or recouped money. It tends to spend it, but it spends it on projects that, that the administration, the council have approved, and w- we're interested in having that process work faster. So I don't think I have a, a valid comparison to my previous testimony along those lines. So my, my apologies to disappoint you, Mr. Volkey.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. One thing I will say about this is we, we just had the charter amendment that, that went through to raise the simplified acquisition threshold and, and that go through here. That really hasn't had time. I mean, procurement told us that was going to make things more efficient as well, and that really hasn't had time to sit and give the council a chance to come back and see what effect that has had on procurement. So I would like to see where that goes before we are then adding a whole host of other positions to that office. There certainly has been a lot of discussion on, on the efficiency, but I, for certain procurements, but I think, having done a lot of digging into some of that and, and speaking with central services, there are unique circumstances surrounding some of those issues, and, and I don't think simply throwing money at the problem or, or adding more positions necessarily solves those issues. So I really would like to see what effect, if any, the, the previous charter amendment that passed has on the efficiency of that office before we, we add a lot of other positions.
Mr. Trumpauer, did you want to respond to that word?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Just, just very briefly, again, I, I would encourage you to reject this amendment, but I, I think I under, I understand the sponsors' interest, and I would encourage any council member to speak with our Director of Central Services, Christine Anderson Romans, to get information on not only how these positions are supposed to help, but how some of the other efficiencies measures may be coming online as well. I, I think we'll hopefully all agree that we want our procurement and purchasing divisions to, to work well. And I think our central services director would be willing to work with you to explain how we're seeking to do that.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Trumpauer, so you'd indicated that in the departmental review for the other positions that have been added to the budget, that you'd received some numbers and some information from them as to how they would sort of self-fund, if you will. They would create revenue that in excess of the position. So when central services brought you these positions that they wanted, specifically these three buyers, three buyer twos and the one buyer one, what evidence or other information did they provide you to support that those positions would in fact decrease time in terms of procurement and allow the county to move through that process faster?
Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer, I don't have all that information at my fingertips, Councilman. I can just ensure you that it was enough to, to compel or to convince the, the county executive and the administration that these were worthwhile. But I'll, I'll also mention that not, not every new position needs to be justified by bringing in revenue. I mean, we certainly don't ask our new police positions or fire positions how, how they're gonna bring back money. Some things are just in the best interest of the county, even if it does mean we have to pay for them.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eighty-four.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number eighty-four has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number eighty-five.
Amendment number eighty-five, reduces personal services by three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating four buyer two positions, one buyer one position, and one procurement strategy manager position. Reduces contractual services by one million two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for other professional services, six hundred thousand dollars, to remove funding for a disparity study, additional Wi-Fi hotspots in cell phones and new computers, gas, natural, and propane, twenty thousand dollars, based on expenditure history plus inflation. County facility repair and renovation, two hundred thousand dollars, based on expenditure history and lack of justification for increased need. Other professional services, twenty-two thousand dollars, based on reduced need for security guard services at Commerce Park and space and real estate rentals, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, based on revised move-in date for Commerce Park. Reduces supplies and materials by seventeen thousand dollars for general office supplies and other office supplies, based on ancillary costs for these new positions. Reduces capital outlay by ten thousand two hundred dollars for furniture and fixtures, based on renovating the one-time furniture funding for the six new positions.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. So this is sort of a piggyback on the last one. It's not a stacked amendment per se, but it just continues on the same vein, basically removing all of the new positions that have been slated for central services, and then the removal of associated costs, as well as for the disparity study.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move, Volkey.
A second?
Fiedler, second.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. All my previous testimony stands, and I guess for the rest of the cuts, we ask you to reject those. I mean, you know, the disparity study is one-time funding. I think it's a good use of, of our one-time funding. It's something that the county's been wanting to do for a while. There was a number of other things in, in the amendment, and I can speak to those individually if necessary, but if, if you rejected the previous amendment, this one goes further, and I hope that you would reject it as well.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eighty-five.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number eighty-five has been defeated.
Is there a motion to vote on amendment numbers eighty-six through ninety-three in a block? I guess not. We'll just go on one by one. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eighty-six. Yes, Mr. Volkey?
Apologies, Madam Chair. I, I had to look at the amendments before I could make the motion. I, I would, I'm happy to make a motion to block vote on my sponsored amendments, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, and ninety-two as a block. I've got no problem with that. I'm, I'm happy to make that motion.
Let's restate it, because we already did eighty-five. Would you say it again, please?
I'm sorry, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? To the motion to vote on amendment numbers eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two as a block?
Hare, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on that motion.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on amendment numbers eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two as a block has been adopted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Volkey. Madam Secretary, please read amendment numbers eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two.
Amendment number eighty-six, reduces capital outlay by eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to decrease funding for automotive equipment replacements in FY twenty-two. Amendment number eighty-seven, reduces personal services by a hundred thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating one assistant to the county executive position. Amendment number eighty-nine, reduces personal services by a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating one management one position and one program specialist one position. Amendment number ninety, reduces contractual services in the administration and operations bureau by two hundred thousand dollars. Amendment number ninety-two, reduces personal services by sixty-three thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating one accountant one position.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, would you like to briefly speak to your amendments?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. The first one is a cut to the vehicle replacement fund. It appeared that the administration has put some extra money in there this year, you know, in an effort to replace more vehicles, so that's the purpose there. The next amendment removes a, as I understand it, vacant position currently in the, I don't want to say this incorrectly. It's a new position in the county exec's office that I believe was vacant, and Madam Auditor can correct me if I get that wrong. The next position is to remove the funding for the two new positions in fire that are the management assistant, the program specialist. So it does not impact firefighters, and it's an administrative cut. The next is to remove two hundred thousand dollars from the health department in contractual services. And then the last amendment is to remove the new accountant one in the finance department.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey so moved.
A second?
Hare, second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Again, I'd ask you to resist voting for this block. Since, since the couns, since the sponsor kind of did a quick hit of, of the amendments, I'll respond to a few of them. On the garage replacement fund, the, i- if, if this mo- money is removed- On the Garage Replacement Fund, um, there, i- if, if this mo- money is removed, that means postponing the replacement of about twenty to twenty-five, uh, vehicles. So we would definitely ask you to reject that. Um, I'm not entirely sure what the vacant position in the County Exec's Office is that the sponsor's referring to. The only vacancy I'm aware of is the EEO Officer, which, um, my understanding is that is, that position is about to be brought on board in a matter of a couple of weeks. Um, so please don't cut that, or we'll have to tell a very talented person that they can't start their job. Let's, oh, Office, Office of Finance, so this, this position supports the, um, the Veterans Tax Credit that the Council passed, which clearly is a priority for you, so I, I believe the fiscal note even, um, included that we would need a position to support that. So I'd ask you to reject that cut. Um, and the Health Department, don't take any money from the Health Department. They need their money. They're doing a lot over there. Um, so happy to answer any specific questions, but I would, I would ask you to reject the block.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Picker, District Two, and I would just also chime in on the Fire Department, um, positions. No, they are not actually firefighters, but, you know, when you have one human, um, resource position to serve twelve hundred employees, uh, I think an additional management specialist to shore up HR in our Fire Department does in fact serve our firefighters and should not be, um, should not be cut.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendments Number eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Numbers eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two have been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number eighty-eight.
Amendment Number eighty-eight reduces personal services by four hundred thousand dollars for turnover, based on historic turnover percentage and number of department vacancies. Reduces contractual services by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for other professional services, two hundred thousand dollars, based on removing funding from the Detention Center Study and Management Services, twenty-five thousand dollars, based on spending needs.
Ms. Fiedler. Or Ms. Hare, I'm not sure if you would like to speak to it as a co-sponsor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, this one is the two hundred dollar detention study, plus the, um, Auditor's recommended cuts. The, the County Executive in his initial remarks mentioned that this two hundred thousand dollars was to combine, um, Jennifer Roden, Ordinance Road. But then we heard from the Detention Center that what they're trying to do perhaps is create a space for some wraparound services and reentry programs and things like that, um, in the detention. I, I'm not sure that there's a real clear scope for this study at this point. I think certainly we could start with some, um, internal, uh, evaluations of it. I just don't, I don't see the justification at this point, um, or the substantiation for, for that money.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
One second.
Second, Volkey.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpauer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, so this, this is an amendment, I believe, that includes a cut that you, that the Council previously rejected, um, in a previous block. But I'll just speak to the study. Um, it, I mean, the County Executive has had multiple conversations with the new Detention Facility Superintendent. Um, I'm sure we can share the scope of that study with the Council, but it's, it's more, it's more than just looking at combining the, the two facilities into one. It's more of a comprehensive look of how to best utilize the capacity of that entire system, uh, with wraparound services included in that. So, um, it's possible that, uh, when, you know, when you write your budget speech, some things get, um, cut out, or you make it a little shorter and something gets lost in translation. So I appreciate there might have been some confusion based on the County Exec's remarks, but I can assure you, the Administration, um, is confident in the scope of that study, and we'd be happy to follow up with the Council. I, I do think it is a good use of one-time funds, and I think it has the potential, um, to have some good outcomes, uh, for the county. Uh, so I'd encourage you to reject this amendment.
Anyone else? Would like to speak to this amendment? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number eighty-eight.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number eighty has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number ninety-one.
Should be done at any second here. Amendment Number ninety-one reduces personal services by a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating one accountant, one, and one customer service representative position.
Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Hare, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Uh, Mr. Trumpauer touched on this actually, because I think in one of the prior amendments, um, there was one of these positions being removed, and he, he mentioned that this was for the Service Disabled Veteran Tax Cut that passed. I think it was Bill one oh five twenty. Um, I, I just wanted to note, we heard from the Department of Finance, obviously, during our budget presentations, and their fiscal note estimated that there were going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand or so applications that were gonna need to be processed for this particular tax cut. And at the time, when I asked how many had been processed prior to the April first date, uh, the answer was twenty-seven. Um, I then followed up again and said, hey, is this gonna be something that we see next April, where we're gonna have a mad rush right before the deadline? And, and the answer was no, these come in steadily throughout the year. So I followed up again, um, a- at the end of May and asked how many had come in since the April first deadline for next fiscal year, and the answer was three. So we are at a total of thirty applicants. That is one percent of the, um, estimated total that was going to come in. I don't see how thirty applicants so far is gonna get us to three thousand, and I certainly don't see that we should be adding two new positions for this, um, until if and when there is actually some jump in these applications and we really can justify it.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
Second, Volkey.
Okay, Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, so the Council rejected the cut of one position, and now this would cut it more, um, from two positions. And, um, we don't have, uh, Controller, um, Karen McQuade here, uh, to, to give you her testimony. But I know that she needs this position, um, and, or these positions multiple. Uh, although to date, there may be less subscribed, uh, to the program than, than we thought. Uh, the last year has been quite tumultuous, and we, we do think that there will be a bigger, um, subscription to the tax credit program. Um, it may not be, uh, what was fully anticipated, but I think it will be more than thirty people. And regardless, I think that these positions are needed, uh, in finance, and I would encourage the Council, if you're interested in this, um, to follow up later directly with, uh, the Controller, and she can explain, um, how valuable these positions will be to her shop.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number ninety-one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number ninety-one has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number ninety-three.
Amendment Number ninety-three reduces personal services by eighty-two thousand dollars for salaries and wages, based on eliminating one systems programmer to position.
Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Hare, which one this time?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, similar comments as before. This removes a new position in consideration of the, um, large, uh, deficit.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
One second.
Fiedler, second.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Ma- or Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, so thi- this is a little bit of a special position, and I'm, I'm happy, after my explanation, to give the sponsors an opportunity to withdraw the amendment, 'cause I think maybe you don't realize it, i- if you didn't speak to the OIT, um, Director. But the, currently, this work is being done through a contract, and that's a three hundred thousand dollar amount. And through some serendipitous circumstance, uh, the ma- the main actor on that contract is, is now interested uh, and willing to become a county employee and do that same level of work, um, as an employee. And so the, the cost of this position is, um, eighty-two thousand dollars. And so we'd essentially be saving, um, you know, over a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, um, on the contract by bringing this position in. So this is actually a net benefit from the county. It's something that Mr. Napolitano was very excited about. And, um, I'm, I'm sorry if that information didn't make it to the Council, but I, I would definitely ask you to reject this. And if you do pass this, then you're the one that has to talk to Rick Napolitano about it, 'cause I'm not telling him.
Was that a threat, Rick?
No, not at all, Madam Chair. I would never do that.
Just kidding, just kidding. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Trumpauer, this is the first time I'm hearing that, so I appreciate that information. But my question, I guess, would then be, was this a one-time contractual three hundred thousand dollars? Or is this a three hundred thousand dollar contract that we have signed for the last five years and wo- would continue looking to have for the next fifteen? I, I can see the benefit if this is, you know, saving us fifteen years worth of three hundred thousand dollar contracts. But if it is a new position for, you know, in perpetuity, and the contract was only going to be two years long, that's a different story.
Thank you, um, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. I believe it is ongoing, but if, if you give me ten seconds, I will, i- is on, is an ongoing contract. So thi- this is going to be a continuing savings for the county. It's a very good move. Um, so again, I would, I would ask the Council to reject this.
With that, I will withdraw my motion to adopt, uh, Amendment Number ninety-three, if Ms. Fiedler wants to withdraw her second. I will withdraw my second.
Thank you. And let's, let's just keep this between us. We don't have to tell Mr. Napolitano about it.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Then let's move on to, uh, Amendment Number ninety-four. Madam Secretary, please read. What do you have, James?
Amendment Number ninety-four decreases administration by fifty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two, fifty-two thousand one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, mid-level administration by seventy-one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, instructional salaries and wages by forty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars, pupil services by two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, maintenance of plant by two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and capital outlay by three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars to remove FY eleven through twelve back pay for unit six, and reduce substitute teacher pay increase. Increases textbooks and classroom supplies by one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, other instructional costs by one thousand two hundred dollars, fixed charges by sixty-one thousand three hundred and three dollars, and special education by one hundred and fourteen and forty, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to add four teachers for class size reduction and two special education teachers.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, Mr. Pruski, I know what you wanna say, but we need to get to a motion to adopt first. So, uh, first, we need Ms. Fiedler or Ms. Hare to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, um, hearing from the community and those in the school system, I know that there is a need for more teachers to reduce class sizes. There were a hundred requested and unfunded, um, trying to get creative without lifting the floor on the school board budget. Not easy to make these decisions, but with, um, budget circumstances, hard decisions have to be made, so you have to get creative. And that's how, um, this amendment came to be. So hopefully, we can have the support of the Council.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
One second.
Fiedler, second.
Thank you both. Before I call on you, Mr. Trumpauer, Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. As a matter of record, I submitted a conflict of interest form. I am going to recuse myself of this vote because it involves mid-level administration for my spouse employed. So I just wanna have that for the record, be absolutely clear, so I will not be taking a vote on this piece of amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Radvian, District Six. So, um, similarly to, um, my colleague in District Four, um, I am impacted, or I am at least mentioned as a, in the collective, uh, group instructional salaries. However, since it is a reduction and not an increase, um, I believe I can vote if, um, uh, objectively on this, uh, sorry, amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Actually, I would be happy to defer to Mr. Shaknovitz or Mr. Stansky from the Superintendent's Office if they're available. I think they'd be better positioned to speak to Board of Ed, um, Amendments. But if, if they are not, I will do my best.
Uh, Mr. Stansky is here. Um, he ca- he might be re- joining us here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Stansky.
Afternoon, Madam Chair. Matt, for the record, Matt Stansky, Director of Financial Operations for the School District. Um, what I'll, I'll say on this is, uh, the only thing is the, on the, on the reduction for substitute pay, we've been, uh, sys- systematically trying to increase subpay for some time now, for a couple of reasons. One, to get it at or above the target fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage increase that will be set, um, you know, by twenty twenty-four. And just for recruiting purposes, it's been getting more challenging to get substitutes over the last few years, and the, the pay increase, um, has helped, uh, has at least begun to help us in the recruiting effort and that. So I just leave that with the Council as per, for your information as you, uh, consider this vote.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Picker, District Two. Uh, I would urge my colleagues to reject this amendment. I realize I too, um, concerned about adding teachers, and I, uh, there's an amendment coming, which actually adds nine additional teachers without, uh, reducing substitute increases. It is, as a former school board member, um, we, I, I, I just know it's such a challenging, ch- they're challenging positions to fill. They're not paid very much to begin with, and we have been working systematically over the years to increase that. But also, uh, robbing Peter to pay Paul is, is just not the way. I, I think we should be moving here. We know we have competing needs in our Board of Education budget, but I, I think when we're acknowledging salary enhancements, I think we should be acknowledging salary enhancements across all units, as all units have worked incredibly hard and continue to work hard, uh, not just during the pandemic, but, uh, uh, in regular years too. And so, um, I would reject this remem- amendment, and just know that there's another one you can vote on later in the afternoon that adds nine teachers. So it's a win.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Amanda Fiedler, um, District Five. So I just wanna say, you know, it's, it's difficult to make these, um, decisions, and I don't mean to diminish, and I don't think that, that making changes to a budget diminish, diminishes any positions. But when there are needs, competing needs, as my colleague said, um, you, you have to make difficult decisions, but also be fiscally responsible. So I certainly understand if this amendment does not have the support of the Council. Um, but again, it was trying and attempt to get creative, um, to get more teachers in the classroom, uh, and spread the, um, spread the money, or pull the money from different pots in order to do so. So appreciate the comments.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Radvian, District Six. Um, uh, as I've listened to the discussion on further reflection, I decided I should recuse myself from this vote as well.
Thank you, Ms. Radvian. Anyone else? Any comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number ninety-four.
Ms. Feeder?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Picker?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, three in the negative, and two recused. Amendment Number 94 has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. When you're ready, please read Amendment Number 95. Madam Secretary, you're muted.
Thank you. The spacebar is not my friend today. Increases instructional salaries and wages by $110,900 based on increasing teacher salaries and reduces textbook and classroom supplies by $110,900 based on reducing teacher supplies.
Thank you, Ms. Feeder or Ms. Hare. Would you speak to the amendment, please? Ms. Feeder, you're muted.
Yes, fix that. And thank you, Madam Chair. Let me make the correct title there. So this is a very, what I think is a simple amendment. It pulls a minimal amount from instructional materials and moves it over to salaries and wages, understanding some concerns from educators in our system and hearing that they would like the board to have the most flexibility moving forward. And I hope that our, my colleagues will support this amendment.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
And a second?
Feather, second.
Thank you both. Mr. Pruski?
Yes, Madam Chair, this does not involve Unit 2, involves Unit 1. My wife is not a part of that. So I just want to make sure for the record, I feel comfortable voting on this, but I did want to disclose again, she works for the school system. But this budget amendment does not directly deal with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodgian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because this does deal with instructional salaries and wages and Unit 1 is funded under that category as a part-time Unit 1 employee, I will recuse myself on Amendment Number 6, excuse me, 95.
Thank you both. I think we are at the part where Mr. Stansky would like to speak to the amendment?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Matt Stansky, Director of Financial Operations for the school district. Nothing really added here, just that the textbook and supply state category is the category we use to just fund day-to-day supplies for our school system. But the amendment seems pretty straightforward, so nothing else to add at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments, my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 95.
Ms. Feeder?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Picker?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one recusal. Amendment Number 95 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. When you're ready, please read Amendment Number 96.
Amendment Number 96 increases instructional salaries and wages by $517,500 based on adding nine teachers to reduce class sizes. Increases textbook and classroom supplies by $2,600 based on adding nine teachers to reduce class sizes. Increases other instructional costs by $2,700 based on adding nine teachers to reduce class sizes. Increases fixed charges by $170,000 based on adding nine teachers to reduce class sizes.
Thank you. Ms. Picker, would you like to introduce this amendment?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Picker, D2. As, as we've talked about this afternoon, we know we are working hard as a county to increase the number of teachers to get us to our recommended student-teacher ratio across all, all, all schools and all grade levels. And we know that we have probably upwards of 300 of those kind of positions to find. I realize this, we're able only to come up with nine this year out of agreed-upon cuts to the county operating budget. But I think it's a really good investment. And I trust the school system knows where they have the greatest need across the county with certain schools with high class size to put them into place. So I hope I can get this across the finish line today.
Is there a motion to adopt? Ms. Picker? Will you move to adopt?
Oh, yeah. Motion to adopt.
Lacy, second. A little rusty. Mr. Pruski?
Sorry to be a broken record again. My spouse is employed with the school system in Unit 2. There's nothing being changed here. Also, as a matter of record, the Board of Education has the final say on where categories get spent, so I just want to make sure as a part of that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Rodgian? We can't hear you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodgian, District 6. So once again, I just want to disclose that I'm a part-time Unit 1 employee for Anorondal County Public Schools. I believe because the intent of this amendment is not to increase salaries, but to increase the number of positions, I am able to objectively vote on this amendment and, but with that disclosure.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. Would you like to speak to this amendment?
For the record, Matt Stansky, Director of Financial Operations for Anorondal County Public Schools. And just want to thank the council for introducing this amendment. And it will go a long way to helping us, you know, dig into that, that class size issue. Obviously, this year, we had some state revenue challenges with our enrollment decline. And so, we are fully expecting students to return in the fall with our opening of our schools five days a week. And so, these nine positions will certainly help if the council would approve. So definitely, thank you for introducing this and wish that you would move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumire, Budget Officer. By our calculations, this would use about $692,800 of recurring cuts that were previously taken by the council. And the county exec believes this would be a good use of funds, and we support the amendment.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District 3. I did some quick math, Mr. Trumbauer and I came up with 1.5 million that this is going to increase in terms of the appropriation over to the board. Is that, do you guys get different math than that?
Chris Trumire, Budget Officer, we generally use a calculation based on about $77,000 per teacher that we got from the Board of Ed. Sure, Mr. Stansky can, can speak to that more directly, but that's what our math showed. And we verified that with the auditor's office as well.
Okay, I, I was looking at the numbers in the actual amendment itself. So the differences between the amount that was being stricken and the amount that was being substituted in. And so, if you look at the difference between them, that's how I came up with my math.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. I, I am looking at this amendment Number 96 right here. I see roughly $700,000 of add. So I, in terms of the striking, we're striking $784,48,000 and substituting it with $784,741,000. So it's roughly $700,000 of an add. But I, I think Mr. Volkey's point is getting at the same thing I was getting at. We are adding roughly $700,000 to the board's bottom line with this amendment. Is that correct?
Chris Trumire, Budget Officer, yes, that is correct. And the source of the funds would be the cuts, the recurring cuts that the council previously made.
Mr. Volkey?
I, I don't think I'm going to get a different answer, so I'll withdraw. Thank you.
No problem. Just respecting the hand, you know, so if there, I saw it. Okay, any other discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 96.
Ms. Feeder?
Nay.
Ms. Rodgian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Picker?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 96 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 97.
Madam Chair, our county auditor may have something to say.
Oh, hello. There you are.
Hi, yes. Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. The last two amendments weren't layered, so we need to draft another one to include what just happened and do that for 97 as well. So we just, I guess, need a brief recess. Is that how this works?
Mr. Trumbauer, maybe you can help us out here. Is this a balancing issue that we can do? Or do we need to, at this point in time, we have to proceed with the way the amendments are numbered? So we would either have to come in at the end today here, or we'd have to somehow rectify this on the 14th. But I'll leave that up to the number of people.
Madam Chair, Chris Trumire, Budget Officer, we can handle this a couple of different ways. We can, we can fix our BoE amendment in the supplemental and incorporate that. Or I think, as you suggested, we could add one at the end. But I think we should proceed how the votes go on these individual amendments. And then we can tack, tack one on at the end to clean it up, as Ms. Bowler was suggesting, if necessary. And we, we can work on that simultaneously as we continue through the scheduled amendments, I believe.
Thank you all. Ms. Picker?
Madam Chair, I've lost count of amendments, but if my co-sponsors agree with me, I believe we can withdraw Amendment 97 since we've already made that add to the BoE budget.
Sarah Lacey, D1, as a co-sponsor, I would agree. Mr. Volkey, you have a question?
I was going to make a motion about blocking, but if we're not done with this one, I'll wait. May I?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the way we read 97, if, if 90s, if Amendment 97 were to pass, then that pretty much incorporates everything that's been done and would, would address Madam Auditor's concern. But that depends on whether you pass 97 or not. So perhaps we should have that discussion. And then if 97 fails, then we'll need to bring another amendment in to clean up at the end or, or something. But my understanding is the way 97 was drafted, if it were to pass, would, would fix that issue. Am I correct, Madam Auditor?
Michelle Bowler, County Auditor, this, I think, is, 97 does not have the offsetting decrease to that other category. It's just using the supplemental amount from the cuts in recurring, the recurring category to put that add in entirely. Whereas the one that just passed was to offset it with, I believe, textbooks as the category.
I think it's simpler to just withdraw it and then do the reconciliation down the road.
Mr. Pruski?
Allison Pruski, I will withdraw.
Madam Secretary, let the record reflect, the three sponsors have withdrawn Amendment Number 97.
And Madam Chair, Chris Trumbauer? Thank you, Chris Trumire, Budget Officer. Can I just suggest that if, if you allow us to, we will incorporate the fix into our supplemental amendments, so we can take it that way? You know, we, we won't do anything extra. We'll just fix this. That, that way, we don't have to recess and, and wait for us to draft amendment.
Well, that should work, because we probably shouldn't be thinking about it on the fly when we're 90-plus amendments in, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd make a motion at this time to block vote on Amendments 98, 99, 101, and 103.
Would you like to explain why?
Sure, in the interest of time, and they all have the same co-sponsors.
All right, saying those numbers again, please?
Certainly, 98, 99, 101, 103.
Is there a second to the motion to vote on Numbers 98, 99, 101, and 103 as a block?
Hare, second.
Ms. Rodgian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to request a couple of moments to review these amendments before we vote on blocking.
That's fine. Let's, let's take a moment.
Thank you.
Are we ready to proceed? Anyone not ready? I believe I called for a second and it was seconded. Correct, Madam Secretary? Then first, we need to vote on the motion to block. Please call the roll.
Ms. Feeder?
May I ask a question quickly? Would now be an appropriate time to add two amendments to the block, or have we passed that point?
It's been made and seconded. I think you would need to amend the motion and then restate it and second it again.
Ms. Hare, would you agree? Okay, a motion to amend the motion? To include Amendment 101 and 102?
I think we need Mr. Volkey to agree as the maker of the motion.
I agree.
Ah, you. The voice from the ether agrees. Okay, you're still here. Well, good, then that works. It sounds like we have agreement. So let me restate just to be sure. The motion has been made to vote on Amendments Numbers 98 through 103 as a block. Is there a second?
Hare, second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please call the roll on that motion.
Ms. Feeder?
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Picker?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Amendment Numbers 98 through 103 as a block has been adopted.
All right. And would any of the sponsors like to tell us about the amendments?
Um, Madam Chair, we should read them then first.
Oh, of course. Yes, look, don't let me skip things.
Amendment Number 98 reduces personal services by $236,000 for salaries and wages based on eliminating two senior planner and one planner-two positions. Reduces supplies and materials by $12,000 for general office supplies based on the position's ancillary costs. Amendment Number 99 reduces personal services by $203,000 for salaries and wages based on eliminating one senior engineer and two environmental control inspector positions. Reduces contractual services by $8,200 for office equipment and removes $55,800 of capital outlay for automotive equipment based on these three positions' ancillary costs. Amendment Number 100 reduces personal services by $212,000 for salaries and wages, $60,000 based on eliminating the childcare program specialist program. Insurance, $120,000 based on duplicate insurance costs. And contractual FICA, $32,000 for incorrect calculation of contractual FICA. Reduces supplies and materials by $55,000 for other supplies and materials based on expenditure history plus inflation and provides for the new additional childcare sites. Amendment Number 101 reduces personal services by $149,000 for salaries and wages for salaries and wages based on eliminating one senior emergency management planner and one emergency management planner position. Reduces contractual services by two thousand four hundred dollars for data processing hardware. Reduces supplies and materials by four hundred dollars for general office supplies. And reduces capital outlay by three thousand two hundred dollars for furniture and fixtures based on eliminating the ancillary costs of these two positions. Amendment number one hundred and two reduces personal services by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for salaries and wages based on eliminating two special program manager-one positions. Amendment number one hundred and three reduces contractual services by one million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars for other services based on maximum agreed-upon contract amount.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any of the co-sponsors, would you like to briefly discuss the amendments, so we can move to adopt? Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair, District Seven. Um, this just goes along with the previous themes of, you know, in a year where we're, we're still seeing a large structural deficit, twenty million dollars. We're trying to make some difficult choices in places where we can, where we can, um, to try and reduce that as much as possible, um, over the constant yield, et cetera. And so continually adding, um, i- is not sustainable.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Fiedler.
And a second?
Second, Hair.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumire, Budget Officer. Um, appreciate the sentiment of the sponsors. Um, but just wanna be clear that these amendments would r- remove the new positions for OPZ, which we're hoping to, that the, the long-range planners will help, um, with, uh, the region plans. It would remove the new positions for the stormwater strike team and IMP. It would remove funding for a new childcare program specialist, and this is at a time when the childcare program is taking over the ten new sites, uh, because of the open door, um, closure. It takes away Ms. Emrick's new emergency management planners, uh, after a period of time where we saw how important emergency planning was. Um, so these are important positions to the administration, and we would urge you to reject this, these amendments.
Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair, District Seven. I just wanted to respond briefly specifically on the planning and zoning positions. Um, all through the GDP process, Planning and Zoning consistently told us they had the staff to do three regional plans, um, at one time, and that's how the GDP was structured. And then during the budget, we've heard about these new positions helping to facilitate the regional plans. Um, but when asked about whether this would make any sort of additional efficiency on the regional plans or enable us to, to add more regions at once, um, Planning and Zoning responded that no, it would not do that. So, uh, there's a, a number of vacancies still in, in these departments that, um, ought to be filled before we're adding new positions.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the block of amendments ninety-eight through one oh-three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
No.
Ms. Hair.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Fruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendments number ninety-eight through one hundred and three have been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number one oh-four.
Amendment number one oh-four. This amendment adds a prohibition against spending any county funds for any purpose relating to critical race theory.
Mr. Volkey, as the sponsor, you may explain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh, with respect to this amendment, it effectively says that the county funds, it cannot be used, uh, with respect to employees, professional development, training, any categories like that, uh, or for any third parties on the concept of critical race theory. And specifically, when it defines what critical race theory is, it ensures that no person in county employment can be treated superior or inferior to another person on the basis of immutable characteristics. It further says that no party, uh, can be made to be responsible for actions, uh, of others in their same sort of class of people. Um, so with that, I think that this is a very good non-discrimination amendment that ensures that county funds are being used appropriately, and I'd ask for my colleague's support. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Volkey.
And a second?
Hair, second.
Um, Ms. Radvian? You have your hand up?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to comment on, um, the way critical race theory is defined in this, um, amendment. It's not the commonly accepted definition of cr- critical race theory. Um, and so I would, I will not support this, um, one, because it's not in, it's not accurately describing critical race theory.
Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair, District Seven. Um, I, I suppose regardless of the title, um, or what you're saying the definition is, if you look at the actual prohibition, I mean, it is prohibiting folks from compelling, um, y- you know, this sort of concept of inferior or superior, and I, I mean, the actual prohibitions are, are very much a non-discriminatory type of, of action. So I think if you, if you look at the language of the amendment, um, it's very clearly trying to make sure there is no discrimination, as opposed to what you may or may not say the definition of critical race theory is. This is very clear that it's, you may not compel a person to affirm or adopt this type of inferiority or superiority, um, that a particular sex, race, race ethnicity is superior or inferior. Um, and that no one should be ad- adversely treated on that basis. So I think those are, are very good things to be supported.
Mr. Trumire, did you want an opportunity to speak to this amendment?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumire, Budget Officer. I mean, this is clearly a policy amendment. I think the, the county exec and the administration would ask the council to reject it. Um, this comes at a time where we're about to bring on, um, our econo- or, uh, equity and diversity coordinator. Uh, we're about to hire our EEO officer, and we are undertaking, um, several initiatives, uh, to make sure that equity is a part of county government. And so I think this, um, amendment would, would certainly cause, um, some disruption in that. But it is ultimately a policy decision up to the council. It doesn't move any money around. Um, but I think the administration would ask you to reject it.
Sarah Lacy, District One, and I'll just add as a comment that, in just reading the, uh, definition of critical race theory in this amendment, um, you know, I think it's internally inconsistent. It doesn't really make sense to say critical race theory is, is in any way without, for example, um, whether I, by virtue of my sex as a female, could be responsible for actions committed by other members of, um, of, you know, the same sex as I am. Um, I think, I, I don't, I just feel like this is maybe not the time or the place to bring this. I would be happy for us as a council to have a full discussion of what this kind of amendment might mean, because it certainly is a policy, um, amendment that could be brought at any time of the year. And I'm sure the public would have a lot to say about the implications of this kind of amendment. Um, but I'd also note, as written, as far as I understand it, it would also apply entirely to the school system. Um, I think that's, would be an unwelcome sort of blindsiding development. Um, and I just don't perceive a real budget-related purpose to bring in this amendment right now. So, uh, I'd be happy to have the discussion, but I can't support this amendment. Does anyone else have a comment? Ms. Pickard, you had waved your hand, but.
Uh, Madam Chair, you, you summed it up. That, those are my thoughts exactly. This is a policy conversation. Do it another time. We have an equity, uh, position coming online. We have a human relations commission. The Board of Ed, uh, discusses their own curriculum and their own professional development in their own public body. This is an, I feel like this is an inappropriate, uh, insertion into the budget process. And there's absolutely no way to even enforce this sort of thing with any sort of oversight. So I just think it's an ill-advised, ill-timed, and, and just not appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one hundred four.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Um, once again, because I do believe that words matter, and the definition provided here for critical race theory is not remotely close to the generally academic, um, definition that is understood, um, I will be voting nay.
Ms. Hair.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Fruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number one hundred and four has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number one oh-five.
Amendment number one hundred and five adds qualifying language to the Department of Public Library's library fund to withhold four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of general fund personal services to support its affiliated foundation until the public library develops a formal comprehensive agreement with its affiliated foundation addressing key areas. And the Office of the County Auditor determines that the public library has established an adequate agreement.
Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair, District Seven. Um, this stemmed from one of the auditors recommended. It was originally a recommended cut, um, and then we heard from the library that they were working on this agreement. And so this doesn't actually cut the money. It just conditions it upon the execution of this agreement, um, consistent with what the auditor says is, is the best practice is. So we would ask that, um, the council move this amendment.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hair, so moved.
And a second?
Fiedler, second.
Thank you, Ms. Bollier.
Thank you. Sorry, um, Michelle Bollier County Auditor, this was an old draft, so I need to get you the most recent copy that came through the Office of Law. So if you can hang on just one moment, or if we have to pull, I'm not sure what happens next. Sorry.
Well, um, Madam Secretary, since we have read this version into the record, shouldn't we, we could withdraw it, we could vote it down, you could quickly put up a one oh-six, which, where would you like to go?
Um, yeah, I would say it's been, you know, the motion's been made and seconded. Um, so either the, uh, it has to be withdrawn formally, or you can just vote it down.
Ms. Hair.
Um, I, I'll withdraw my motion.
Ms. Fiedler.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. I think amendment number one oh-five was withdrawn, and we can put one oh-six, or do you, do you already have it?
Okay, okay. Hi, sorry, um, can I, one more second. Michelle Bollier County Auditor, um, it turns out that the lang- the legal language, which is what we need, is updated. It's just a description that didn't get updated, so I retract all of my comments. I'm sorry. Number one hundred and five go out strong, right?
Okay, so we're starting over with amendment number a hundred and five.
Correct.
Okay, give me one moment here. Adds qualifying language to the Department of Public Library's library fund to withhold four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of general fund personal services to support its affiliated foundation until the public library develops a formal comprehensive agreement with its affiliated foundation addressing key areas. And the Office of the County Auditor determines that the public library has established an adequate agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Hair.
Everything I said before.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second?
Fiedler, second.
Excellent. Mr. Trumbauer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumire, County Budget Officer. Um, on behalf of the library system, uh, I'll ask you to reject this amendment. Uh, I do have a statement from them that they sent, um, when we shared this with them. Um, and I'll, I'll read it verbatim. As Mr. Ald said during the rebuttal to the auditor's recommendations, "The library has been working for several months to develop a memorandum of understanding between the Library Board of Trustees and the Library Foundation Board of Directors. We will have it ready for votes at the foundation's September meeting and the trustees' October meeting." So I think, based on that commitment, um, the administration would feel that this amendment is unnecessary, and we should, uh, take the library system at its word, that it will enact those memoranda of understanding.
Ms. Bollier.
Thank you, Michelle Bollier County Auditor. Um, we worked in conjunction with the Office of Law to try and come up with the right language to make sure that there's some accountability to that statement, because generally, from an audit perspective, we don't have the luxury of taking people at their word. So we appreciate the opportunity that, um, the co-sponsors brought forth this amendment. But it's, um, a foundation that's been in existence, and this is a, a general best practice. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll make one real quick. Sarah Lacy, District One. I, I really appreciate our auditor's diligence in, in pointing this out. Um, and I agree, as a general principle, um, you know, for the need for, for backup. I hope the library foundation, uh, and the library system follow through as they have said that they would. But, um, perhaps, if I may suggest, um, they could let the auditor know that they followed through and/or perhaps Metamor could reach out to them after a reasonable period of time to ensure that they have. Um, and because I think it can be handled that way, uh, I, I won't support this amendment, but I do support the idea of what they need to do. Does anyone else have a comment? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one oh-five.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hair.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Fruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number one hundred and five has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, I suppose, I think we should bu- move on to bill number thirty-three twenty-one, but I don't have a line in my script about what we do next with bill thirty-two, thirty-one, or twenty-one, which I can't say appropriately.
You'd like me to read the title?
That would be a good, good thing.
I will do that. Bill number thirty-three twenty-one, Anordinance Concerning Tax Lobbies, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts.
Is there any discussion before we get to amendments of this bill? Mr. Trumbauer, did you want to speak to this at this moment? No? Okay. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment increases the tax levy for the Crofton Special Community Benefit District to include a loan payment that will come due in FY twenty-two.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Radvian, so moved.
Allison Pickard, second.
Very good. Um, is there any discussion? Mr. Trumbauer, do you want to speak to this?
Chris Trumire, uh, Budget Officer, now, pretty much as advertised, I think this is just updating the, um, accurate number, uh, to reflect the, the community law.
Any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hair.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Fruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one to bill thirty-three twenty-one has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read- Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment corrects the tax levy for the Sylvan Shore Special Community Benefit District.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer. This corrects the type of. We'd ask for your support.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 to Bill 3321 has been adopted.
Excellent. We will now take our recess to allow the administration time to prepare its supplemental budget. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration suggests a one-hour break. I think we've been able to do a lot of work, and we'll just need an hour to double-check everything and bring forth our supplemental letter. If I can suggest reconvening at 4:15?
I see no objection to 4:15. The council stands in recess until 4:15 p.m. today. Thank you.
Thank you. A little longer than we thought, so I've got it queued up. I'm gonna hit send as soon as that PDF is complete. I could also send you the letter along with the operating amendments. We could get started, and I can follow that up when the capital amendments are churned out of the PDF Gizmotron. If we want to keep on time, that would be fine, too.
I think we need the whole package to call it.
Do you want, you want to just give us 10 minutes? You want to reconvene in 10? Sorry about that.
Let's come back at 4:30.
At 4:30, okay, and we will have it ready. Sorry, we really didn't want to be on time.
That's okay. Thank you kind.
Okay, see you in a few.
Mr. Trumbauer, is budget ready to begin?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to report that we are ready.
Excellent. Well, it is 4:30. The June 8, 2021, meeting of the Inardo County Council is now reconvened. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Oh, there you are.
Present.
Okay, Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey. Mr. Pruski.
Bill here.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Bollier.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have six council members and our county auditor present.
Excellent. Mr. Trumbauer, you at the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Let me just reiterate again for the record how pleased we were to work in collaboration with the council and the auditor staff and the council staff this year. By anyone's recollection around here, 4:30 is the earliest we've ever done the supplemental budget in the day. So we're happy it's still light outside, and we're happy that we had a productive day to this point. So if it pleases the council, I'll be happy to go through very briefly the county executive's supplemental budget letter, and I'll defer to you, Madam Chair, whether you want to put it up on screen or just have me run through. Either way is fine with me.
Madam Secretary?
Whatever would help the council the most, although I will say I feel like Mr. Trumbauer's presentation will probably be the most helpful.
Okay, so I'll just proceed to read through, and I presume that the council will make the budget letter available on the website for our viewing public to see at a later date.
We certainly will.
Okay, great. So in accordance with Section 709 of the county charter, the county executive is pleased to present the county council with proposed amendments to the FY '22 budget, which was originally submitted on April 30. These amendments typically address two categories. We have errors and omissions, which I'll go through first, and then supplemental requests or additions that I'll go through after. So under the category of errors and omissions, we have So under the category of errors and omissions, we have a handful here. In the general fund, uh, we have an amendment that will, um, increase the grants, contribution, and other category by $74,000 for Office of Transportation. This is just the county match of, of two new grants that they've gotten. Um, we have the Department of Libraries, um, will decrease the general fund appropriation by $46,100. This is just to correct their calculation error in, um, FICA. And then we have a, um, position, uh, change in Department of Detention. This isn't a monetary change. It's just, um, changing the, uh, reclass position in the budget to a Program Specialist II instead of a Management Assistant II. And that was after consultation with the department where they felt that was a better reflection of their responsibilities. Um, in the other funds, the council just adopted the amendment, uh, in the previous bill for Crofton SCBD. So we have amendment that reconciles that in the budget bill. And then there's a technical correction that will, um, reference the appropriate sections for the new funds for the Visitors Bureau and the Arts Council. Um, so those are the errors and omissions. Under our supplemental requests, uh, we have a, a few of these on the operating side. In the current expense budget in the general fund, we're, um, adding one environmental sanitation position. This is a health inspector, um, to Department of Health. So this is $55,100 for that position. Um, we're proposing to add two deputy sheriff positions, uh, in the sheriff's office. That's $137,600 of total funding. And then, uh, we're increasing contractual services for Office of Information Technology by $250,000. That's for a new contract to do GIS services to support the Board of Elections. I'm sure council will remember when the board came before you, um, they rose, uh, raised that point. And then in the police department, there's three actions we're taking. Uh, we're proposing to add a police officer position, um, and $148,600, uh, to pay for that. And then we're increasing the capital outlay for mobile data computers and e-tax purchases. And we're decreasing contractual services by a hundred dollars. We're also, um, you heard in the county exec's budget address that we're, um, adding a new bureau to the police department. And so we'll have an amendment to make that administrative change in the budget. Uh, there's no net funding change, but it will, um, create the Community Services Bureau within the police department. Uh, in other funds, we're increasing grants contribution and other to the Community Development Fund. That's about $13,000.8, or 13.8 million, I'm sorry. And then in the grant special fund, Special Revenue Fund, we're increasing appropriation for additional grants in Department of Aging, Fire Department, and Health Department. Uh, we're also realigning grant funding from contractual services, uh, to grants contribution and others in the Department of Recreation and Parks. So that's just to reflect the current situation with our grant funding. Um, you'll see a table in the letter that summarizes those moves. Uh, it's labeled Grant Special, Special Revenue Fund Supplemental Budget. In our Board of Education, uh, we're basically reconciling the restricted funding, and this is based on the latest distribution from the state. So there's also a table in the supplemental, um, letter that ex- explains these maneuvers. And then now I'm gonna get, get to the capital budget amendments, and there's a few of these, so if you'll bear with me. Um, there is a table at the beginning that summarizes the amendments, um, that are already approved for General County Bonds and General Fund Pago. So, uh, these reductions collectively are used to support the supplemental amendments, um, that are itemized, uh, that I'll go through now. On General County, we're increasing the cost for additional salt storage capacity project due to, uh, new fiscal analysis. Unfortunately, materials have gone up a bit. Um, on the Defender's Memorial, we're requesting an additional $75,000 based on the final cost estimates. I think the council knows that that monument is being prepared to be unveiled in about three weeks. And I will note that the City of Annapolis did also contribute an additional $25,000 to that, um, recently, too. Uh, on the Ralph Bunch Community Center, there's just an error, so we're correcting that. It goes from $300,000 to $250,000. Uh, we're requesting an increase in school sidewalks. So this has been funded at $20, $250,000 a year to year for some time, and based on the current backlog and the interest in, um, the Safe Roots to Schools program, we're actually doubling that. So this would, uh, mean a total of $500,000 in General County Bonds in FY22 as well as the following years in CIP. Um, okay, on Board of Education, we have a series of, of 10 amendments here, and these are all basically reallocations of, uh, Board of Ed capital funding that are based on the reversions that the school system provided to the administration and to the auditor's office. So these, these are programmed in exactly as the school is, school system requested. And I won't go through the details, but I'll just tell you, uh, that it affects all day K and pre-K, athletic stadium improvements, building system renovation, uh, driveway and parking lots, maintenance backlog, Old Mill West High School, relocatable classrooms, and roof replacements. So these are the recipients of the, um, what we call givebacks, school system, uh, reversions and other capital projects. So again, it's no net change. It's reprogramming the money that was, um, agreed upon to be, uh, cut from, by the school system. Um, we're also going to switch out some funding under Roads and Bridges in the Deval Outing Access Improvement category. So, um, we're replacing the PPI funding with impact fees. Uh, on Community College, we have two items. We're going to, at the Community College request, we're going to add $2,850,000 of Community College Pago in FY22. This is actually pretty exciting because this will allow them to begin work on the Floristano, uh, building uh, much sooner than anticipated. And it will create a space where the students without access to technology at home can come and connect and learn, um, and collaborate. Uh, and then we are adding the $1.4 million of Pago to the InfoTech Enhancement category. I think that is something that several council members have requested and we're pleased to put that in. Uh, under the library, we are just reconciling, um, the amount of the state grant that was received by Rivera Beach, um, Community Library. And then under Wreckin' Parks, we have a couple here. On Fort Smallwood, we're recognizing the, um, additional program open space funding. So this switches out, uh, $723,000 and change of General County Bonds with POS funding. And then, as I mentioned, um, in our rebuttal last week, we are recognizing an additional program open space allocation, um, from Greenway's, uh, Parkland and Open Space category. Uh, in Jug Bay Environmental Edge Center, we are requesting, um, to increase the other state funding by $49,000. And this is to reconcile an additional state grant. And then finally, for Wreckin' Parks under Northwest Area Improvement, um, we are moving $1.1 million of VLT money to, um, from the Northwest Area Park Improvements to Athletic Stadium Improvements, and this is for the Joe Cannon Turf Field. On Public Safety, uh, we are reducing the deappropriation. So that's kind of a double negative. We're reducing the deappropriation of General County Bonds, um, for the South Glenburny Fire Station by $14,000. That's just based on the current, um, fiscal analysis. And then there is a final balancing. So the current expense, uh, budget supplemental request for general fund totals $695,300. This uses $411,900 of the general fund operating budget reductions from today's amendments. In addition, the supplemental budget cuts $146,100 from general fund operating budget due to errors and omissions. And then finally, the supplemental budget utilizes $137,300 of Pago cuts from today's amendments. Um, so all of these amendments are attached and are, are, uh, in the hands of both auditor and council staff. And we look forward to, uh, discussing those on Monday. If you have any questions in the interim, um, I, the entire budget team is at your service. And again, let me just say it's 4:45 and, uh, this has been a productive day. And really thankful to members of the council, members of the auditor staff, and, uh, personally, especially to my budget team who did a fantastic job today pulling everything together. So, thanks to council. I'm happy to answer any questions or, um, we can call it a day.
Madam Secretary, I suppose we could take questions, but will we also take questions on the 14th? On this, since we're not voting on these amendments until then?
Sure, yeah. I would, I mean, I think you, anyone that has a question right now that is coming to mind can certainly ask it, and the budget officer can answer it to the best of his ability right now. We can also ask questions on the 14th, probably ask questions in between as well.
Excellent. So everyone knows you have more than one bite at this particular apple. And don't feel pressured to come up with a question right now. Feel free to if you want. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody having a question. Therefore, um, I will go into our section about the public hearing on, on the supplemental. Under Section 709 of the Charter for Inarano County, if the county executive proposes amendments to the budget so as to increase items in the budget or add items to the budget, the county council must give reasonable public notice of the proposed amendments and hold a public hearing on the amendments, provided that the county council may waive the requirement for a public hearing by a vote of five members. May I have a motion to waive the public hearing required by Section 709 of the Charter?
So moved. Counselman Pruski.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Mr. Volkey's absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, two in the negative. One absent. The motion to waive the public hearing required under Section 709 of the Charter has failed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The motion to waive the public hearing required by Section 709 of the Charter has failed. Therefore, a public notice of the supplemental budget will be given. Copies of the amendments will be posted on the county website. Please check the council's website for ways to submit testimony on the supplemental budget. The public hearing will be held during the virtual meeting scheduled to begin at 9:00 AM on Monday, June 14th, 2021. And any public testimony received will be posted before the meeting begins. Upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the council will vote on the supplemental amendments to the budget and vote finally on Bill numbers 3221 through 4421. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer and the entire budget office. Thank you especially also to Ms. Quirby and Ms. Schultz and Ms. Bowler for all of their hard work. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
And a second?
Hare, a second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until 9:00 AM on Monday.